Call to order, the Morgantown City Council Regular Meeting, January 9th, 2018. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Rachel Fetty.
Present: Ryan Wallace.
Here.
Jenny Saline.
Here.
Ron Delaney.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Brazidas.
Here.
Barry Wendell.
Here.
And Mayor Coecky.
Here. Thank you very much. We'll have the invocation and then the pledge to the flag.
Creator, we come before you with gratitude for a new year and hope for the future. We ask that you keep all of our employees and our fine officers and everyone who plays a role in this city, our city manager and everyone, keep us all safe and help us to be wise and to use our best judgment as the year unfolds. Give us grace and mercy.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Very good. Approval of minutes, the 12-5-2017 regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those? Seeing none, do I have approval of the minutes by consensus? Yes, okay. The regular meeting minutes, 12-19-2017. Any additions or corrections to those? Seeing none, do I have consensus? Yes, thank you. Conference session meeting minutes and the 12-19-2017 regular meeting minutes. Well, I already did that.
You did that.
The conference session meeting minutes, are there any additions or corrections to those? None? By consensus? Thank you. The minutes are approved. Correspondents, we have police awards tonight. Please come forth. It should be. Tap it once or twice and we'll say. Is there a button?
Talk into it. Get the wine up there.
This is a test.
It was exactly like how you practiced.
All right, now we're on. Thank you.
Okay. First, I would like to introduce myself. I'm not in the limelight as much as our chief, so a lot of you may not know who I am. I'm Deputy Chief Eric Powell. I've been with the department for about 20 years and just recently got promoted to the position Deputy Chief. It's actually a newly created position. And I just want to say, even though I was a little hesitant to do this, because I'm not used to speaking in front of large crowds a lot, I am very proud to be able to do this because I take a lot of pride in where I work. I think that the police officers that serve the city of Morgantown, the citizens of Morgantown, are some of the best in the country. And this is just a small sample of some of the great things they do on a daily basis. And how this works is basically throughout the year, recommendations are made to a committee that's made up of other police officers as well as civilian personnel. And those recommendations are reviewed and then whatever awards is appropriate for their actions are then recommended by this committee. So tonight, you're going to hear the results of last year's exemplary performance of some of the officers with the Morgantown Police Department. We're going to start off by recognizing Master Patrol Officer Troy Ball and Detective Lawrence Haisley. Can I have them come on in? Just come on over here. Detective Haisley, you and Master Patrol Officer Troy Ball conducted research in conjunction with numerous victim advocates and developed a victim-based program in an effort to reduce emotional trauma to sexual assault, domestic violence, and other personal violence victims. The project culminated in the first soft interview room in the state of West Virginia. Your vision, foresight, and teamwork led to community outpouring that resulted in the Judy King Soft Interview Room that was completed, developed, and constructed through donations and community outreach. It is in keeping with the law enforcement tradition that you be presented this unit citation for you and the unit's hard work and dedication that you were able to sustain. Congratulations. Next, we have Patrolman Zane Breakiron. On September 9th, 2017, you responded to a disturbance at the Chestnut Street parking garage based on description provided by a 9/11 caller. You spotted the suspect in the passenger seat of a vehicle attempting to leave the area. You immediately provided information to officers in the surrounding area and despite being on foot, were able to initiate a felony traffic stop. Even though there was no cover or concealment to work from, you still utilized your skills and training to prevent a possible armed suspect from fleeing the area. Your attention to detail, quick thinking, actions, and timely communication led to the recovery of two firearms, one of which was previously reported stolen, that were used during this disturbance, resulting in one felony arrest for wanton endangerment, as well as three additional misdemeanor arrests. You have served the citizens of Morgantown proudly and your actions are in keeping with the law enforcement traditions. It is because of your actions that you are presented with a department letter of recognition. Thank you for a job well done. Next, we have Patrolman First Class Bernie Molek. On June 25th, 2017, you responded to the report of a fall of greater than 10 feet on Snyder Street. When you arrived, you found a male victim who had fallen down a hill and into a ditch in critical condition with multiple wounds as a result of the fall. You immediately began performing CPR and basic life support methods until emergency medical personnel could arrive and take over medical intervention. Your quick thinking and actions undoubtedly saved this young man's life. It is in keeping with the law enforcement tradition that you be presented this life-saving medal for your actions. Chad is going to be receiving two awards. Someone asked you to stand, remain up here after you receive this one, okay? On May 3rd, 2017, you responded to a report of a cardiac arrest. You found an individual that was suffering from heroin overdose and near death. You quickly administered naloxone to the victim. Had you not reacted quickly and administered the opioid antagonist, the victim would have died. It is in keeping with law enforcement tradition that you be presented this award of excellence for your diligent response in this life-threatening situation. This next award is one of the higher awards that we can bestow upon an officer. On April 2nd, 2016, you responded to a report of an attempted escape by a prisoner from the area of Walnut Street. You arrived and found a handcuffed prisoner that fled from officers and jumped into the Monongahela River and was in imminent danger of drowning as a result of being handcuffed, coupled with the frigid water temperatures. Other officers were attempting to retrieve the suspect, who was noncompliant and continued to resist being brought to safety, were being overcome by the water temperatures. Despite the great personal risk to yourself, you entered the frigid water and were able to subdue the prisoner. Your selfless quick thinking and actions undoubtedly saved this young man's life, as well as prevented injuries to your fellow officers. It is in keeping with the law enforcement tradition that you be presented this Medal of Valor for your actions. I'm going to need Weber, Trump, or I'm sorry, Weber, Murphy, and Caldwell. Come on over here, Troy. Did you say Caldwell wasn't here?
He's words.
Okay. So I'm just going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the description of what happened and I'll present each one of you the award. It's the same incident rather than read individual ones. On March 18th, 2017, Officers Weber, Murphy, Caldwell, and Metter responded to the report of a suicide in progress. You arrived and found a man armed with a knife, bleeding from self-inflicted wounds, and showing visible signs of both shock and panic. You found that other attempts to stop the bleeding were unsuccessful and you were able to apply a tourniquet that Officer Weber was able to retrieve and stop the immediate bleeding. Your quick thinking and actions undoubtedly saved this young man's life. It is in keeping with the law enforcement tradition that you be presented this life-saving medal for your actions. This goes to Officer Metter. And I dropped. I'm going to ask Officer Breakiron to come back in here for a minute. I mistakenly read the wrong thing to him. I had my things messed up. Read this one more time. Let's try this one again. On June 24th, 2017, you responded to a report of a drug overdose. You found an individual that was suffering from heroin overdose, near death. You quickly administered naloxone to the victim. Had you not reacted quickly and administered the opioid antagonist, the victim would have died. It is in keeping with law enforcement tradition that you be presented this award of excellence for your diligent response to this life-threatening situation. There was nothing wrong with his last award, but this one's a little... On July 17th, 2017, you responded to a report of an overdose in a parking lot. You found an individual that was suffering from heroin overdose and near death. You quickly administered naloxone to the victim. Had you not reacted quickly and administered the opioid antagonist, the victim would have died. It is in keeping with the law enforcement tradition that you presented this award of excellence for your diligent response in this life-threatening situation. Congratulations. Can I have Officer Metter up here again, please? This was the award I mistakenly gave to Officer Caldwell. Well, I'm new to this as well. One mistake. Officer Metter, on September 9th, 2017, you responded to a disturbance at the Chestnut Street parking garage based on a description provided by a 9/11 caller. You spotted a suspect in the passenger seat of a vehicle attempting to leave the area. You immediately provided information to officers in the surrounding area and despite being on foot, were able to initiate a felony traffic stop. Even though there was no cover or concealment to work from, you still utilized your skill and training to prevent a possible armed suspect from fleeing the area. Your attention to detail, quick thinking, actions, and timely communication led to recovery of two firearms, one of which was previously reported stolen, that were used during this disturbance, resulting in one felony arrest for wanton endangerment, as well as three additional misdemeanor arrests. You have served the citizens of Morgantown proudly and your actions are in keeping with law enforcement tradition. It is because of your actions that you are presented with this department letter of recognition. Thank you for a job well done. We had one other officer that was unable to attend. Officer Caldwell is receiving an award of excellence and a life-saving medal as well, but due to him working, he's not able to attend. He's on call. So that concludes my presentation.
If you'd like to read what he's receiving the medal...
Sure. This is Officer Caldwell. His first award was an award of excellence. On 17th of July, 2017, he responded to a report of an overdose in a parking lot. You found the individual that was suffering from heroin overdose and near death and administered naloxone to the victim. And had he not reacted quickly and administered the opioid antagonist, the victim would have died. And it is in keeping with law enforcement tradition that he be presented this award of excellence for his diligent response to this life-threatening situation. That's the first one. And Officer Caldwell is also receiving a life-saving medal for his actions on March 18th, 2017, where he, along with Officers Weber, Murphy, and Metter, responded to a reported suicide in progress. All the officers arrived and found a man armed with a knife, bleeding from self-inflicted wounds, and showing visible signs of both shock and panic. You and Officer Caldwell, along with the other officers, subdued the victim and applied a makeshift tourniquet for metal and kitchen utensils that slowed the bleeding until other officers were able to assist. Your quick thinking and actions undoubtedly saved this young man's life. And it is in keeping with law enforcement tradition that he be presented this life-saving medal for his actions.
Thank you. Before you go, just...
Chief, there were two civilians that would have received a award, but they were not present. Do you know at least their names? You did tell. Sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot.
You did, and I can't recall because I had the conversations with them like three days ago when I asked them if they would want to come and they couldn't come. I do know that both of the individuals were being recognized for their actions in a fatal car crash that occurred. They did a lot in assistance as far as rendering first aid and aiding officers prior to the arrival of officers. They hung around and helped out a great deal. That's about all I can remember about it.
So noteworthy achievements, nevertheless.
Yes, we did recognize two civilians who aided us in answering the call and they unfortunately were unable to attend. I communicated with them on the phone and they wished for their awards to be sent to them via mail, so I want to honor their request. Probably camera shy like me, I guess.
I want to thank you all. You are a testimony to the quality of our police force and we very much appreciate your service. Take a moment just to let them clear the room and we'll continue. Very good. Next portion of our meeting is the public hearings.
We have the correspondents.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have additional correspondents.
Yes, we do.
All right.
Only moment.
Surprise, surprise. All right.
Good try, though.
We're going to let you go first, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, really? Okay. Well, this is an email, or an email we all received and I thought it would be helpful to read it aloud. It's from Kyle Wiggs, who I don't think identified what part of the city he lives in, or perhaps he doesn't live in the city. But he said, "Dear members of Morgantown City Council, the recent attention garnered by members in the city council is a little concerning. I certainly respect and will listen to anyone and everyone's political leanings and opinions. That is very important, but this is not the forum. City council equals roads, police, fire, garbage, and recycling, water, that's it. If you as an individual want to make a difference in the world as a politician, run for state government or for Congress. As a two-plus decade resident of the Morgantown area, I see this town changing more rapidly than I've ever seen before." And then he goes on to mention some concerns about downtown and criticizes what he sees as anti-Trump rhetoric coming from the city council. I think, yes, our responsibilities certainly are to roads, police, fire, garbage, and recycling and water. And a couple of us wrote, "With achievements that we have achieved as part of the city council related to those areas, our roads statistically are much, much better this year than last. The percentage has increased dramatically. The fire department is in much better shape because of the safer grant that will be approved and that we will continue to work with." But on the latter point about not participating in the national conversation, I think it's important to emphasize a few things. One thing is that what happens at the national level does affect us in Morgantown. There's no bubble around our community. We can't be divorced from what's happening at the national level. Take, for example, the decision by the president to withdraw from the Paris Climate Agreement. We, as a city, decided to sign on to it. Why did we do this? One, it makes economic sense, it'll save us money. But two, a changing climate does affect us here in Morgantown. And these quotes come from a groundbreaking article in the July 10th to 23rd, 2017 issue of New York Magazine. Researchers like Marshall Burke and Solomon Seng have managed to quantify some of the non-obvious relationships between temperature and violence. For every half degree of warming, they say societies will see between a 10% to 20% increase in the likelihood of armed conflict. The arithmetic is harrowing. A planet five degrees warmer would have at least half again as many wars as we do today. Overall, social conflict could more than double this century." Our correspondent mentioned, "Let's help our chief of police." Well, we certainly are helping with the issue of violence if we sign on to the Paris Climate Agreement because we don't want to see violence doubled in Morgantown. That would be doing no service to Chief Preston or his successors. Going on, the article mentions, "The air we breathe is becoming more polluted, obviously. It just crossed 400 parts per million in terms of carbon dioxide content. If it gets up to 1,000 parts per million by 2,100, as is estimated, human cognitive ability will decline by 21%. In other words, we'll be one-fifth dumber than we are now, or less smart than we are now." And do we really want that for our community? Do we want our mechanics at Brockway Auto to be one-fifth less intelligent? Do we want our students at WVU to be one-fifth less intelligent? Do we want our US president to be one-fifth less intelligent? You're having open-heart surgery. Do you want your surgeon to be one-fifth less intelligent? So it's impossible, again, I think, to divorce the national conversation from the city's business. Maybe some of you received this, but Governor Justice did send me a Christmas card in response to my concerns about traffic, truck traffic, heavy truck traffic. So the conversation continues. In my card, which I did include a photo of my family, but of course, I mentioned the truck issue, so this is ongoing. I told you I'm not going to give up on it, so here I am again. Thank you, Governor Justice, for the card. Another constituent mentioned charging WVU students $50 for parks and rec fee. He's concerned that we need to support both parks, which I'm all in favor of. I'm not necessarily in favor of an approach that would tax some of our most vulnerable members of our community. WVU students are often working one, two, or three jobs to pay their way through school. And I should say that WVU has reached out to my invitation or our invitation to collaborate on improving our public library, or dreaming here, maybe even building a new state-of-the-art library. So I'm happy that WVU has stepped forward there, but definitely, definitely, we need to support our parks and rec, not just because of the physical, psychological, and spiritual benefits of the outdoors, but because it makes economic sense. A community that has green space is much more economically vibrant. That's it for correspondence. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Counselor Wendell.
So I wrote this up and I sent it to the city clerk, Wendell. So I had two emails from someone on Bryan Place, which is in the seventh ward, complaining that the snowplow did not fully do her street and the garbage was not picked up on her street on Muncie or Coates on December 30th. The second email from her said the snowplow came back and did a good job. I also received two emails from former city councillor Dave Ornic about trash pickup in Suncrest. There was a problem January 6th, as well as December 30th. I received an email from Justin Click, a WVU student, about the Unite for Nine campaign. Their goal of that campaign is to crack down on sexual violence. At WVU, there's an apparent reference to the rules on sexual violence and harassment. The claims of sexual violence are being watered down by Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos, and this is apparently a reaction to that. I responded to Kyle Wiggs, Mark was talking about his letter, so I'm just going to read what I wrote. "Mr. Wiggs, this response is for me only, without consultation with anyone else. I ran for office on a platform of respecting the past, living in the present, and planning for the future. We do all the things you think we should. Please fire streets and sidewalks, garbage, recycling." I'm extremely allergic tonight. "In this era when our West Virginia and United States governments seem intent on returning us to the 1950s, it is important that we speak for the future, a cleaner environment, a commitment to cultural diversity, and a focus on the health and well-being of our residents. Morgantown is the bright star in our state, economically and socially. We have the best chance to showcase an open and inviting city. That is the goal for me. As to your complaints, if you are taking your recycling to Westover, you must not live in the city limits. We have curbside pickup of recycling. I dispute your statement that downtown is unsafe after 10:00 PM. I believe it is safe. We could make it even safer if we could get restrictions on guns passed, but that would be hard to enforce on a city level. We are working, I have lobbied our federal and state representatives for that. We're working with Chief Preston on safety issues and our Health and Wellness Commission, now forming, will look at alcohol abuse in the area. This council also accepted a federal grant to hire more desperately needed firefighters, even though at some point that will cost the city. I'm sure you and I travel in different social circles. I met many new people over the holidays and most of them praised the council for working collegially to make Morgantown a better city. Thank you for contacting us." I also heard from Sarah Anderson. She said, "Hi, Barry. I'm following up from the brief conversation we had over the weekend about a bill likely to be introduced this session in Charleston. The bill would essentially prohibit municipalities to pass labor-related bills, so no paid sick leave, no maternity benefits, no minimum wage." Perhaps not surprisingly, Alec likes to write these bills. That's the American Legislative something Council. Granted, no cities in the state have passed them, but we could be the first. I'm hoping that the Health and Wellness Commission can take up issues of paid sick leave. In addition to being critical to the public health of our community, it would be an important, it would be an opportunity to stand up against restrictive policies. In addition, I am working with Seth DiStefano and Ted Batner, WVU Center for Budget and Policy, on this initiative. They know tons of more and are happy to share what they know, and we're happy to chat more about this, too. Thanks and stay safe. I got an email about conditions on Van Voris Road. I responded, this was on Morgantown Utility... Utility Board issue, that they were behind schedule, and that the holidays and poor weather held them up. I have a long email from Ace Parsi suggesting we set up a committee to have awards for compassion, perhaps with a dinner and a commission to make these awards. I received a phone call from a woman concerned about her mother's move from a rehab facility to a nursing home. I asked Paul Brake for a suggestion about where she could go for advice, which he gave me. I called the woman back, but she has not responded to my message. Finally, Joe and I spent New Year's Eve at the home of former Morgantown councillor Helian Friedberg, and New Year's Day at the home of councillor Rachel Fetti. Many people I had never met before sought me out and told me they were pleased by how the present councillors worked together and the direction in which we are taking the city. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Fetti.
Well, my esteemed councilpersons have covered some of the ground that I was concerned about. I did very briefly want to address one specific statement made by Mr. Wiggs, and that is regarding his suggestion that if you want to make a difference in the world as a politician, run for state government or for Congress. And I would just like to encourage Mr. Wiggs and really encourage everyone in the Morgantown area to see local government and any contribution that you can make in your community, whether it's in your neighborhood, or in your neighborhood association, or on any of our boards and commissions, on the local level, or at the city level, to see that is the very best place to start. And, and I would really encourage Mr. Wiggs and all of his fellow residents to consider participating in our, in our joint municipal, in our joint political life at the local level, because I, I do disagree. I do think this is the most important place. It's the most important place to begin. And I also received a letter from Ace Parsi. I appreciated that, and I'll be passing that along. I have also heard some concerns that there may have been some, some oversights in some of, as we were sort of rapidly appointing folks to the Bow Park Board, and that there made some, there may have been some errors in some of our appointments. And so I just wanted to reassure anyone who's concerned about that, that of course, we will be looking into that issue, and we'll try to address it with as much transparency as possible. I received a letter from Tiffany Davis. She is a constituent of 1st Ward, and this young woman is requesting a letter of support. The letter that I have from her is very brief, but I did bump into her at a caroling event in 1st Ward, and she indicated that she's looking for some support from the city or some guidance regarding her efforts and her team's efforts to develop a medical marijuana dispensary. So I will forward that along. City manager. I also received a letter from Tanya Hadley. She also lives in 1st Ward, so thank you, everyone from 1st Ward. Thank you for getting in touch with me. I appreciate it. This, this letter concerns a notice that she needed to repair a sidewalk in front of her house, and she's inquiring about whether we have yet developed a city pool that we've previously discussed, or some other way to allow funds to be gathered to assist folks who might have difficulty repairing their sidewalks. And I will pass that along also. And then I also received a note from Mr. McCartney. He is also in 1st Ward, and I have been, and I received a letter from him, I received a call from him after this letter. He was requesting some information regarding how property owners can go about trying to address concerns they have with contractors whose activities are encroaching on their property in a way that appears to be outside of city code. And so I heard from him after I received this initial communication, that he had spoken with the city manager, and that it was his belief that his concern was being addressed and would be addressed to, to their satisfaction. So I will just pass this along. And that is all. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor?
I'll try to keep this brief and relevant. I had some Facebook communications that I'd like to share. It's not necessarily a letter, but it's relevant. I posted regarding the status of snow removal in Morgantown, and that we have four plows out at a time, and that the city crew does what they can to clear the roads as quickly as possible. I also provided my Facebook friends with the number of the city garage on the suggestion of a city staff member. And I'm happy to report that about 17,000 people were affected by that post. I can see how many people viewed the post. And 17,000 people, so apparently it was a hot topic, or a cold topic, I don't know, but it was shared about 150 times across the city, I presume. And it led to some complaints and also to some clarification. So I had, with Paul Brake's approval, I had a good conversation with Kenny Holloway at the city garage, who's in charge of all that. And he informed me of our procedures, and I was very happy to hear about the capabilities of snow removal that we have. And on a related note, I received, shortly thereafter, I received an email communication from someone in 3rd Ward, Mike Wolf, saying this, "Ryan, I wanted to express my gratitude to Morgantown Public Works this morning. I witnessed them pre-treating primary routes through the 3rd Ward area of Wiles Hill this morning. This pre-planning and action ahead of the forecasted icy conditions is greatly appreciated, given the lessons learned in similar forecasted predictions a couple of years ago." So I wanted to commend our city staff for doing what they can to plow as quickly as possible, and thank Mike Wolf as well for his communication. I also had an email from Dr. Daniel Carrier. I believe he's with the Mon County Health Department regarding their dental RV program, wishing to connect with the city and through also collaboration with Tom Bloom, Commissioner Bloom, regarding what we may do to partner on a mobile dental clinic program. So I intend to have a preliminary meeting with them on that topic, just to gain more information. Pleased to report that. I also have an email from Dr. William Ramsey at WVU. He's re-establishing contact regarding the Blue Zone Initiative that the Health and Wellness Commission will likely be examining. And this is a potential partnership with WVU to make Morgantown and the surrounding area a designated Blue Zone, which is an area that focuses on improved health and wellness and quality of life. So again, here we are planning a meeting in the near future, and just wanted to report on that topic. Finally, electronics recycling. I've been communicating with, again, Commissioner Bloom regarding free electronics recycling offered at the Walmart here in Morgantown. I believe that's Grafton Road and 68, that Walmart. On January 13th, this coming Saturday, they will be accepting old and used electronics for recycling from 7:00 AM until 11:00 AM. And I, for one, will be volunteering at that event. So if you have any old electronics that you'd like to get rid of, please come down. It's a good opportunity. Keep them out of the landfill, and dispose of them at no cost. Thank you.
Very good.
So my most frequently, there's a lot of conversation about our trash hauler and making sure that trash was removed. We happen to have, this is in the 4th Ward, and then part of the 7th Ward, we have a Friday trash pickup. And so it meant that it was on a Saturday, and so it was kind of in the middle of a storm, and so it was not picked up, and then it wasn't picked up for a number of days. And so I'd like to thank Carol out of Manager's Office, and eventually the manager, for going back and forth with our service providers. So the sort of takeaways from all of this is, first of all, asking the trash hauler not to promise individual property owners that they're going to come and then not come. That's really important. There are a number of people who called in to ask for a special pickup because theirs had been missed, and then, and then no one came that day, no one came the next day, and then we came the next day. So if, if somebody's not gonna come pick up, don't promise it. Then property owners need to, if your trash is missed, leave your trash out, because then they'll likely come in a few days, and then your trash will be picked up. And then another sort of point for the company is that recycling is part of the contract, and people are upset if their trash is picked up eventually, but then not their recycling, because that is part of the contract. And I'd also like to note that one person in our area asked for a refund and received one. So that's, that's that. But anyway, I appreciate the work of the Manager's Office to try to keep following up, and people were acting reasonably and calling the company, and we were trying patiently to keep working on it, and eventually, all the trash got picked up. So that's good, especially because the basketball game was on Saturday night, so the trash pickup late Saturday afternoon was very important, so that people weren't stepping out of their vehicles and into, into large amounts of holiday trash. That's it for me.
Any additional correspondence?
I was gonna save this for, for my comments, but, but I've gotta respond now. All the trash wasn't picked up. There are areas in Woodburn where the trash just wasn't picked up this week. My can, cans on my street are still sitting there, and our scheduled pick, our scheduled pickup is tomorrow. So I do really appreciate people's patience. I know that the weather was extreme, and I think, I think folks have been very, very patient. But, but it gets, you know, it gets to be problematic when-
It reaches a limit.
Yes, yes, so-
Smoke is coming out of people's ears.
Yes. So I also heard, heard from neighbors and constituents about, about that issue as well. I'm happy to hear that a refund was requested and given.
And you noticed that I'm, I'm not recommending that everyone ask for them, but I'm pointing out that that did happen.
Keep it to correspondents, please. Thank you. Are we finished with correspondents? Counselor Fetti.
I apologize. I just wanted to let folks know. We were contacted, I was contacted by the NAACP, and asked to get the word out about the Monday, January 15th MLK celebration. And that is going to be at 2:00 PM, as it typically is at the Metropolitan Theater on Martin Luther King Day, and it looks like it'll be a wonderful program, as always. And then I was also contacted to raise some awareness about the Mon County pit count, which is the point-in-time count for county, the homeless. Mon County will be doing their count at 4:00 PM on January 23rd, and they're interested in recruiting people with lived experience with homelessness, who have worked with those who've experienced homelessness. So the person to contact would be Ryan Boyd, who's the director of the Bartlett House Housing Solutions, and the Mon County pit coordinator. Thank you.
Hey, feel passive along. Perhaps we can have that posted on our website.
Thank you.
Very good. Additional correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing. First on the agenda is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017, 2018 annual budget of the city of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached heretofore, and made part of this ordinance, as the same applies to the general fund. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this at all? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2017, 2018 annual budget of the city of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached heretofore, and made part of this ordinance, as the same applies to the coal severance fund. Is there anyone wishing to speak to that? Seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. First is consideration of approval of second reading, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017, 2018 annual budget of the city of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached heretofore, and made part of this ordinance, as the same applies to the general fund. First reading, 12/19/2017. Would the city manager like to give us a little information?
Happy to. So what's included, there's a spreadsheet that, that's printed out horizontally here, that, that shows an overall adjustment to the general fund budget of $269,000. There's a couple of elements that are going on. One, that we're receiving the, the first amount of the, the grant, the SAFER grant for the firefighters. So we're accounting for that dollar amount coming in, the first six months of the first year. There's some individual adjustments that are made within the respective departments. What's also notable is dollars that are normally spent on capital improvements. So this is monies that are collected through the municipal service fee that were included in the general fund budget. We're just simply moving that over to the capital escrow fund. So that's, that's a net, that's, it zeroes out, if you look at the dollar amount, what was set aside for the, the police and the Streets Department. Those, that specific dollar amount is based on a percentage of what the amount that's paid through the municipal service fees. So we designated a certain percentage that would be for police equipment, street equipment. And so we're just simply moving those dollars over to the, the capital escrow fund. So the, the overall adjustment to the, the general fund is the decrease of the contingency fund in the amount of $238,225, that's resulting in the, the individual changes that, that I enumerated, so.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Very good. Motion and second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Let's call for the vote.
Rachel Fetti?
Yes.
Ryan Wallace?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Ron Delaney?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Brazidis?
Yes.
Barry Wendell?
Yes.
And Mayor Kueke.
Yes, and it passes 7-0. Next on unfinished business, consideration of approval of second reading of an ordinance amending fiscal year 2017, 2018 annual budget of the city of Morgantown as shown in the revised budget attached heretofore, and made part of this ordinance, as the same applies to the coal severance fund. First reading, 12/19/2017. City manager, you're on again?
Absolutely. So what is included in here is an appropriation of Bow Park in the amount of $93,000. And I want to take you back to the, the previous adjustment that you made. If you notice on the spreadsheet, that shows $75,000 that came to the general fund, that's now being appropriated back to coal severance, that's going back out to Bow Park. So the, the difference between the two is that the coal severance fund has accumulated a fund balance, and that those dollars, that the, the overall gross amount is the $93,000 that goes to Bow Park. What their intent is, is to purchase equipment. From what I understand, initially, they're going to be spending initially a, a truck in the amount of $43,000, and then there'll probably be another type of truck, type of equipment that they will be purchasing similar to that on the, the other half of that amount. So this is badly needed old equipment that Bow Park has needed for some time, and, and so we're, we're able to make that adjustment through the, the coal severance fund. What, what the state auditor is recommending, or urging us to do, is that the, the coal severance before that would come into the general fund, now when those monies are taken in by that fund, they will be distributed out directly. And we have just tied that to Bow Park of capital needs that they have. And they could change year after year, but at least when the budget was set up, that's what the intent was, earmarking those dollars to the one-time expenses within Bow Park. So, so this reflects these accounting changes, as well as the appropriation that will enable the Parks and Market Commission to purchase new trucks.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
To approve. Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the vote.
Rachel Fetti? Rachel Fiddy?
Yes.
Ryan Wallace?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Ron Delaney?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Brazidis?
Yes.
Barry Wendell?
Yes.
And Mayor Kueke.
Yes, and that passes seven zero. Boards and commissions.
Yes, council needs to make their appointments to the tree board.
Very good. We have, uh, quite a few number, uh, quite a few members volunteering to re-up and, uh, we're happy to receive them. We'll run down through them. Uh, Brent Bailey?
I move to appoint, reappoint Brent Bailey to the tree board.
Love a second?
Second.
Okay. By acclamation?
Yes.
Very good. Dave Barnett?
I move to, uh, reappoint Dave Barnett to the tree board.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. By acclamation? Very good. Dan Brown?
I'd like to nominate Dan Brown, renominate Dan Brown for position on the tree board.
Very good. And a second?
Second.
Very good.
By acclamation?
By acclamation? Okay. Jonathan Cummings?
I move to reappoint Dr. Jonathan Cummings to the tree board.
Second?
Second.
Very good.
By acclamation.
By acclamation? Very good. Phil Crim?
Yes, I move that we reappoint Phil Crim to the tree board.
Second.
Very good. By acclamation?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'd like to move that we reappoint Dave Davis to the tree board.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
By acclamation? Very good. John Weems?
I move that we reappoint John Weems to the tree board.
And a second?
Second.
Very good. Thank you very much. By acclamation? Excellent. Uh, these are all excellent candidates. We're happy to have them serve. They've demonstrated their capabilities in the past. They are an asset to the city. We can move on now to the public portion which shall- Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I make a suggestion? Since we already interviewed Karen Coons, um, can we go ahead and appoint her to the, for the BZA?
We did interview her, but we interviewed her for another commission. I would feel more comfortable that we were more specific in, in our interview. But I'll leave that to the council, which is council's pleasure.
We interviewed Karen Coons, um, not too long ago.
For the MUB board?
For the MUB board.
I agree with the mayor. I think I would be more comfortable having an opportunity to discuss this particular position with her before appointing her.
Okay. Um, so, um, I, we still have a few others that we have to interview before we interview the wellness people?
We can discuss this, we'll work out the, we'll work out the details of the schedule.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I just wanted to add that I would feel comfortable re-examining the application of, uh, Ms. Karen Coons before we just appoint her. It might not warrant another interview, but perhaps our own review of, of necessary information, just to make sure we're doing due diligence.
We want to do this, uh, in a very public manner.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think the idea of passing it around and making a decision without, it's problematic. So, uh, but we definitely will move it forward. Thank you. Counselor?
On the same topic, what would help me moving forward is seeing a list of who we, I was looking at the list that we were provided with. Uh, and you're going to work out with the clerk who we need to interview next. But if we have positions that are open, right here, if we have positions that are open that we don't have, do we need? It, it looks to me like we need more BZA applicants.
And that's all we have right now.
And that's, and that's all we have that's open?
We have one position open and one position, one applicant.
Oh, I thought we had two positions open. We just have one.
One position open, one applicant. And, and our, my main concern is, and I'll express this to you, and again, it's will of council, uh, that we address any open position that would inhibit the activity of that particular commission. As long as they have a quorum and they can function-
Yeah, they do.
I think it's appropriate to, to do things in a manner that is thoughtful and-
Yeah, it would be great to re-interview or reexamine, whatever you want to do.
And give the opportunity for other people to participate. So rather than close it off on the run, if we have a chance to advertise, there are some open positions, if you're listening, if you're interested in the BZA-
And, and it is still, I don't think that it's, it's closed. It's still available for people to apply.
Woodburn School Reuse Commission as well, there are openings.
Right. It's still open, yeah.
But we are functioning, they have a quorum and they're functioning.
Yes.
So again, we, we will address the, the immediate issues during our due diligence and, and proceed as well, as we can without making too much of a burden on the rest of us, so.
Good.
Any other conversation? I don't mean to cut this off. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll move on. Let's see, we're at the public portion now. Public portion which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. If you'd like to talk to council, please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and if you will, limit your conversation to perhaps four minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak or address the council? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Special committee reports. Seems like I have a lot of reports already. Do I have any special committee reports? We've got one, two. All right, let's start off, we'll give-
I just want to share, um, some upcoming meetings. The Planning Commission meets this Thursday, January eleventh at six thirty PM here. Um, it's a, it's a light agenda for the regular meeting and there's a minor subdivision in the sixth ward that was tabled, um, last meeting. Um, and then there's also going to be a, a workshop that'll follow that regular meeting to study multi-use non-residential buildings. Um, both of those meetings are, as always, open to the public. Uh, they're also televised as well. Um, the Museum Commission will be, meet, uh, next Thursday, January eighteenth at six PM. And, um, just also want to report that the, the water infiltration problems at the Woodburn, um, the old Woodburn School, I know we hate that name, but until it's changed, that's what it is, um, are being addressed. And, and again, thanks to, uh, city manager Brake and his team for, um, for working through that. And that, that wraps up my special committee report.
Deputy Mayor?
I thought this would be worth mentioning from last night's neighborhood coordinating council meeting. So property owners in Morgantown are required to clear snow and ice from sidewalks adjacent to their property within twenty-four hours of a snow event. The good news, if you're physically unable to clear your sidewalk and have no neighbor, friend, or family member that can help, please call three oh four two eight four seven four zero one and speak to someone in code enforcement because volunteers are available to help citizens who aren't able to clear their own walkways. And then also from the Neighborhood Coordinating Council, which I, I shared both of these items on the Nextdoor site. I didn't have seventeen thousand views, but maybe sixteen thousand. So Morgantown is committed to clearing all roads within the city of snow within twenty-four hours, if not eight to ten hours. Sometimes the state neglects to clear state roads and plenty of state roads intersect the city in a timely fashion. Morgantown often steps in to clear state roads because as Kenny Holloway, Director of Public Works, said at the meeting, "I'm always going to err on the side of public safety." Bridges are also a state responsibility and Morgantown often picks up the slack here as well. And if your city street isn't cleared within twenty-four hours, call three oh four two nine one seven four six five. There was a discussion about, well, could the state reimburse us for doing what the state should do? And that could be an ongoing conversation, perhaps in connection with getting those trucks around downtown. Okay, all right, I'm done.
Very good. Any others?
Brief special committee report from the Health and Wellness Commission. We had a meeting last week in which we were able to go through, I think, thirty-one applications for-
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, thank you, uh, for this newly formed commission. And it's a wonderful problem to have, to sort through thirty-two highly qualified and experienced, um, applicants for improving the health and wellness of Morgantown. Uh, we were able to prioritize the top applicants that we wish to interview. So we'll start with the first, uh, ten most qualified, if you will, and, and work our way, um, through that group as far as we need to go until we appoint the commission. But I just wanted to say a huge thank you to everyone who did apply to that commission. When we have thirty-two applications for, I think it's six positions or seven that we're appointing, uh, obviously we can't approve everyone, so it's, um, with great diligence that we'll have to review and interview. But, uh, thank you so much to the community for showing interest and support for this and we will proceed with those interviews as soon as possible, um, perhaps starting, well, next week or, we'll work that out. But anyway, thank you to the community for your interest in health and wellness in Morgantown.
Just to enlarge on that a bit, um, having participated in that process, uh, the, the applicants are indeed sterling. What we attempted to do was to satisfy the requirements of very specific areas that the Health and Wellness was looking for. And, uh, there were numbers of people that had some overlap and there were numbers of people who offered very unique services, but, uh, we took what we hope will be the best in terms of fulfilling the needs of that specific commission. And, and we are grateful for all the quality of the, the rest of them that applied. Anything else? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to briefly mention that the Downtown Task Force will be meeting tomorrow at six forty-five. I know that conflicts with many, uh, other things that are going on downtown and here in relation to the city, but I just wanted to let folks know that that will be on the Methodist Church in Spruce Street. And that is significant for folks who are interested in trying to move along, um, some of the initiatives that, uh, were put forward by John Sonnaday. And I, I would like to encourage anyone who's interested in the issues related to homelessness or downtown, uh, concerns, um, possibly Mr. Wig could also join us. We'd love to have the help.
And the time was again?
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five, the initial time. Spruce Street Church.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have one other thing from the, uh, coordinating council meeting was the city manager pointed out our, uh, twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen strategic plan. And if you don't have your copy, you can get one from the manager's office. Also, it's online on the city website. But what's, what's wonderful about it is that there's a one-pager version, but there's also a very detailed version that has, uh, that has lots of the, uh, different ideas and things that are being, uh, worked on with specifics. Uh, and so we look forward to having, uh, such a document and working on it and not having it be on the shelf, but having it operational in the coming two years. It has items such as attractive amenities, uh, excellent city services, quality development, cooperative relationships with other entities, uh, fiscal stability, having a vibrant downtown, annexation, affordable housing, transportation, and infrastructure. So it pretty much covers the gamut, but it's, um, it's the, it's the details that are important and that you'll be seeing worked on over the coming year.
Is that it? Then we're all finished with that? We'll move on to new business.
Consideration of approval, first reading of an ordinance setting forth the rates, fees, and charges for service to customers of the water work system of the city of Morgantown.
Uh, city managers, is something you want to talk about or do we-
Just very briefly, I'll make the introduction. So you have the ordinance that, to do this work for the Rockley Road, um, the extension project, general manager Tim Ball is here and, and will fill you in on the, the specific details about this particular project.
Can we suspend the rules? Very good.
Yep.
Thank you. By all means, please.
Good evening, council. Tim Ball, Methodist Utility Board. Uh, the Rockley Road Waterline Project will bring water service to an unserved portion of Rockley Road in the Cheat Lake area, uh, serving twenty customers that have committed, uh, contractually to, to take water service. The project cost about eight hundred and, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in round numbers funded by a twenty-six thousand dollar contribution from MUB in accordance with PSC Rule five, point oh five, a contribution from the county commission of fifty thousand dollars, and equal loan and grants from the West Virginia IJDC, uh, in an amount of three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars each. That's the key part of this, that the, the, the project is essentially funded fifty percent by a loan from the IJDC, forty years, one percent. That loan will be repaid by the customers who are served by the project and that's accomplished in the form of a surcharge that will be added to their bill in addition to the normal, uh, water charges that are based on consumption. So the first ordinance that you have tonight is that water rate ordinance. The second ordinance following that one is an authorization ordinance which is required under new PSC rulings, uh, replacing the certification process that the PSC previously had. The need for that authorization ordinance, it's, it's effectively you, council, giving MUB permission to build the project. And that permission is needed because the project is outside of the normal scope of, of MUB's daily routine. And the aspect that causes that, uh, characteristic of being beyond our normal routine is the, the debt service surcharge that will be enacted. Uh, the last explanation I'll give you is that the debt service surcharge is enacted through a rate ordinance in order to ensure collectibility on MUB's side and, or viewed from the other side of, of the, the transaction to ensure payment by the customers of the debt service surcharge. By doing that through a rate ordinance, if the debt service surcharge is unpaid, water service will be terminated for the unpaid accounts. So that, that guarantees, uh, payment to us so that, uh, we can make that loan payment on behalf of the customers. And the last point is that the rate ordinance, while it addresses the entire tariff of Morgantown Utility Board, it in practical effect applies only to the customer served by the subject project on Rockley Road.
Darren, are there any questions for the-
So there's no danger of those having to pay the surcharge, uh, from skirting those responsibilities, that they would basically have to leave their houses not to pay that surcharge?
That's correct. And, and then the next occupant of that house would be subject to the same surcharge.
So the only way that money is not coming through is if the properties are just vacant.
That's correct. And in the event that that would happen, the surcharge would be recalculated based on the number of remaining customers.
Great. Thank you.
Very good.
So two questions. Um, how much is it going to cost the city? If I can just simplify it that much?
Zero.
Zero. All of the expenses are recouped through this surcharge?
Yes. Well-
Or the two other-
Or, or, or the grant from IJDC-
Okay.
Or from the two smaller contributions, one from MUB, one from the county commission.
Okay. And then secondly, just for my own edification, that's well beyond the boundaries, current boundaries of municipal limits. Most city ordinances affect city limits. This one has power beyond city limits because, why exactly?
West Virginia utilities are allowed to extend, municipally owned West Virginia utilities like MUB are allowed to extend beyond the municipal limits. I think the lim, I think there's a geographic limit of twenty miles, but I'm not certain of that. Uh, but it, it sounds familiar and I see Ryan nodding his head. So we are not bound by the municipal boundaries. And just as a point of fact, uh, our customer base is split almost perfectly fifty-fifty between city residents and, and county residents.
And if I heard you correctly, the obligation, the contractual obligation runs with the land or the property and not the current owner, so there's no risk of, of losing that contractual obligation?
That's effectively correct. But by doing the surcharge via the rate ordinance, we accomplish what you just described.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Fiddy?
I have a couple of questions. So on seventy-six and seventy-five, um, we have two, so we've got schedule number one and the section on the quarry-run debt service surcharge- and the section on the Quarry Run Debt Service Surcharge is on page seventy-five of ninety-four in our packets, or page number three. And there's a, there's just a paragraph that says, "Applicable only to customers in the Quarry Run area, forty dollars per month per customer." And then on page seventy-six of our packet, which would be page four of the packet I think you submitted, then there's a second statement, "Quarry Run Debt Service Surcharge, applicable only to customers in the Quarry Run area, eighty dollars bi-monthly per customer." And I'm just curious about the repetition of some of that language and wondering why it's put that way in one section bi-monthly and one section bi-monthly. And I'm wondering if it's the same charge or if-
It is the same charge. The Quarry Run sections that you're referring to have been previously approved. They're a part of the existing water rate ordinance. That was for a project done in the Quarry Run Whispering Woods area several years ago. So it's actually a precedent that has been in place that was treated and financed similarly to the Rockley Road project that is the subject of tonight's discussion. The amounts differ because the loan amounts differed. Okay, so the Quarry Run surcharge was calculated as a function of the number of residents at Quarry Run and as a function of the loan amount at Quarry Run. And so the math determined that that would be, I'm going from memory, but I think you said forty dollars monthly and eighty dollars or eighty dollars bi-monthly. Schedule one in the tariff is the monthly rate. Schedule two is the bi-monthly rate. Only one of those applies to any given customer. But some customers are billed monthly, some are billed bi-monthly.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that because it's exactly the same in the Rockley Road section that follows, immediately follows. So we have a monthly and then a bi-monthly charge. And then the other question I had is for, and I'm only asking this because it does seem as if it might be challenging for folks to make these payments, depending on, you know, how life unfolds. It might be challenging for folks to make a payment of fifty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents per month. And I'm wondering if that, if that amount includes all of their connection fee?
No, that amount pays only their share of the loan.
Okay. And then can you tell me what the connection fee will be?
If they-
For the average customer?
If they take service during the construction of the project, which I think all of them have committed to do, their connection fee is a hundred dollars. That's a one-time fee, a connection fee.
Okay.
If they don't take advantage of it at that time and the project is constructed, their fee would be seven hundred dollars one time.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Sling.
So what determines whether someone is a monthly or bi-monthly customer? Yeah, I think you've told me that before, but I cannot remember.
It's generally a function of geographic location. And I don't mean to imply that half of the residents in the neighborhood-
In the small area, yes.
Are built bi-monthly.
Yeah.
But we established monthly rates in the Cheat Lake area when we did, when we set up the sewer system there because they had relatively high rates compared to Morgantown. And so recognizing the difficulty of paying a relatively high rate on a bi-monthly basis, we decided to build that area monthly. So basically, what we're doing is we're setting the rate in the ordinance to go either way, bi-monthly or monthly. But I think it's a fair generalization that the neighborhood that we have, that we're speaking about will be billed only one or the other.
Right. Depending upon whether that would be good to be billed monthly because it's a fairly high surcharge.
Correct. But just to make-
All things being equal, yes.
Just to make the ordinance as flexible as we can so that we don't have to come back and burden you to approve a new one just because we're going with a different billing cycle. We establish it so that it addresses either frequency.
How are they receiving their water? Do they all have individual wells?
They do, and they're not very dependable. Both, either in respect to water quality or quantity, most of those wells are deficient, at least in one aspect.
So they're probably thrilled that you're coming there.
I would think so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thrilled enough that they've committed to pay this surcharge.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
And I should say, you've given me the opportunity. I should credit these customers. They really organized this project. They campaigned behind the scenes in Charleston in order to lobby for the funding that I've described to you. They've done a nice job of organizing among themselves to discuss the project's scope and all the details that I've described to you tonight. So they've really done a nice job in that community of organizing and supporting this project.
Thank you.
You think they might be interested in good fire protection too?
I think they would. And they'll enjoy some improved insurance rates as a result.
Thank you.
One more brief question. Could you remind me, what is MUB's contribution and where is that money coming from?
MUB's contribution is in round numbers, just under twenty-six thousand dollars. It's provided in strict conformance with PSC Rule 5.5. That rule provides a formula that says every utility is required to participate. Not, it's not optional. We're required to participate based on sixty months of net revenue. So you basically take, I won't bore you with the details, but it's based on sixty months of net revenue.
Certain percentage of that set forth by this rule?
Correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, having heard that, we're back in session. And do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the roll.
Rachel Fiddy?
Yes.
Ryan Wallace?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Ron Delaney?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Brazidas?
Yes.
Barry Wendell?
Yes.
And Mayor Kueke?
Yes, and that passes seven zero.
Consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance authorizing the acquisition and construction of certain extensions, additions, betterments and improvements to the water portion of the existing combined utility system of the city of Morgantown, including, but not limited to, a waterline extension project in the Rockley Road area.
That's just the continuation-
Move to approve.
We've already heard? All right.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any additional discussion?
Call for the question.
Call for the question.
Rachel Fiddy?
Yes.
Ryan Wallace?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Ron Delaney?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Brazidas?
Yes.
Barry Wendell?
Yes.
And Mayor Kueke?
Yes, and that passes seven zero.
Consideration of a resolution-
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Authorizing an inter-fund loan between the Capital Escrow Fund and the Morgantown Municipal Airport Fund.
City manager, I'm gonna give us-
Do we move to approve at this point before we do this?
No, just I'm gonna, let him tell us what we're talking about.
Okay.
This is part of our ongoing effort of approving the airport property, the construction of this numberway already on the east end of the airport. Going back in time, what started all of this was the city set aside funds from the sale of an armory property for particular improvements. Also at the time, there was a carve-out of flat land on the airport property that took away the potential of doing any expansion activities on what's called a cross-run runway at the airport property. So the current runway that's operated is a north-south, and there is a cross-winds runway structure that's there. When the sale of that armory occurred, there was funds that were dedicated to building a roadway to the West Virginia Armory, otherwise referred to as the Readiness Center. So once that roadway was paid for in approximately one point six million, the remaining amount was dedicated for the airport hangars. What the original intent and anticipation is that the costs would be significantly defrayed through the innovation readiness training, which is a special program through the Department of Defense, where DOD takes troops and puts them in a real-world training exercise where potentially they could be constructing such a facility wherever the military is deployed and across the world. Coincidentally, at that time, when we were approved for that labor, there was the budget discussions going on in Washington. And at that time, the Department of Defense instructed that they had to scale back. So we did not receive the earlier promised number of troops that would be involved in the labor costs associated with the construction of these hangars. Additionally, when initially we went into the application for the IRT program, it also included equipment rental and fuel, which neither of those were covered. So the dollar amount that we had set aside never would have included all of the materials associated. At some shape or form, we would have had to approve a transfer to include the remaining amount above and beyond. The initial estimate for the materials alone was two point five million. There are estimates based on some work being done by contractors and extrapolating out the estimates in order to complete Hangars Two and Three, the labor involved, which brings the total project to three point nine million to complete that. So what is needed in additional funds is two point two to complete this project. Why is this significant? As we are looking to commit infrastructure improvements overall to the airport, it demonstrates to the Federal Aviation Administration that we're following up on a promise that was made by the city long ago. When that carve-out of the property that was made to the Readiness Center, the commitment that was made that any of the proceeds from the sale of this armory property that was on the mile ground would be allocated back into improvements at the airport. We are actively looking at aggregating additional business. That airport is very busy from what is known as corporate general aviation. So there's a lot of businesses that fly private jets out of there and to provide state-of-the-art sort of facilities. The current hangars that we have out at the airport are from pre-World War II. They're in very, very poor condition. And a few of the hangars can no longer be used because of the amount of deterioration that's occurred. Because this is, it's the east end of the property that we're making the investment, the current hangars are on the west end. Eventually, the old hangars will likely be torn down. And that end of the property could then potentially be leased to private corporations if they wanted to have private hangars. So there's another revenue opportunity, but that's another conversation for another day. What I'm proposing to you this evening in order to complete this project is dedicating the revenues that we will be generating from the new facilities and to pay that back. So this would be analogous to the Parking Authority building a parking garage. And so when you go to park your car, you help pay for that facility. Well, airplane owners that rent out space, there'll be a significant portion of that that'll be paid back to the Capital Escrow Fund. Now-
So is this kind of like a self-loan essentially?
It is. So we're, in the grand scheme of things, you know, money is relative, but for budgeting purposes, this is not a large enough project that would be worth going out into the market and to go through a loan. And, you know, you're paying a lot of people to provide their expertise and processing this. So we're saving those costs. And so what's included in here is that it gives me the latitude, if we want to charge ourselves interest payments on top of that. Initially, this would be an interest-free loan since we are the bank in that regard. Now, one of the potentials options that we could do is to simply allocate the funds and not ask for a payback method. As we are looking and very actively pursuing the runway extension, which will be an even much larger project, we are close to finalizing that with the FAA. In fact, they had a lengthy telephone call with the Airport District Office. There's been a lot of time and energy put into that because we are preparing for construction, if all goes well, of the runway sometime next year. And depending on what the amount of reimbursement that is sought, which is allocated and given through the federal government, will determine what financial resources that we will need on our end to pay for the dollar amount to do the runway extension. So they're all very critical components, very integrated and interrelated to one another based on the earlier promise. This is a project that goes back many years and predates most of us around the table here. And so, given the circumstances, it's probably not the most ideal, but what makes sense to me is to present to you really a reasonable and realistic repayment method and looking at what the going rates are for airplane storage in the vicinity. Because we'll have to readjust our rates. Our rates are extremely low right now, but they're spaced on, you're looking at a building that's, many of the buildings that are really reached beyond their obsolescence. So these would be adjusted to market rates to help pay for the facility. From my understanding, talking to the interim airport director, we have nineteen applications on a waiting list. So-
For the hangars.
For the hangars, correct. So as part of this effort, this will take through the spring, improbably we'll be looking at some sort of a promotion to gauge some interest, to see, you know, the type of planes that would want to rent the space. This would also include the capacity that the, the first hangar that's nearly completed can accommodate twin-engine planes, which there are very few hangars in the area that can accommodate that large of an aircraft. So again, more of that corporate business, general aviation. That's really the business model that we're after. This is really what's to accommodate. As much as we would like to have increased passenger service, that is not the emphasis here. So as we have competing airports nearby, again, this is to accommodate the general aviation needs that we have here in Morgantown right now. And what we've learned through this justification study is that there are companies that would prefer to fly in and out of here that are avoiding the airport, not because they don't want to come here, but because of the runway length is not safe in certain weather conditions to either land or to take off. There's been one company that had a larger commercial plane that was used for business purposes, and they ended up selling that larger plane because, again, they could not use the airport facility. Assuming that the runway extension does occur, and we remain very optimistic, one company indicated just the opposite, that they plan on making a purchasing decision on a larger airplane if we can build a longer runway. So that's part of the anecdotal information that we've gathered on the expansion of the airport. But this is a significant step here this evening to finish out this project, to utilize the materials that we've already purchased. the materials that we've already purchased. And so, that's to shore up all the, the engineering costs associated with that, the, the construction. And this will be all privately constructed. This will no longer be involving the, the military, but professional construction companies will help us complete the, the airport hangars. So, that is what's presented for your consideration. And if there's other questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to clarify.
Senator...
Before we get...
Can I ask a question?
Well, before we get into that, let's get the motion on the floor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Now, discussion.
So, the argument to the average Morgantown resident in relation to this topic would be this helps us sustain a atmosphere that attracts and keeps businesses in our community and therefore represents a vibrant step to maintain the economic health of our community. Because I don't, you're talking about private business planes. Essentially, these aren't commuter planes. So, the average resident is not going to be personally affected by, usually by stepping on one of these planes and flying out of our airport. But this is doing a service to our community because it encourages businesses to come and stay here.
It, it does. So, I would go a step further. Not only sustains, but I would argue that this has a multiplier effect. And what do I mean by that? Is that at industries that are looking at locating here and need to fly, whether it be executives in and out, there's a lot of industries that are growing rapidly around us right now and where decisions have to be made very quickly and it's key to get individuals in and out. Even if you, you look at WVU Medicine, they're looking at a potential business model where they fly the doctors out to the, to the hospitals where the, the patients need the particular procedures. So, there's all sorts of dynamic stories that we can talk about. But by providing better, better general aviation is that, in my view, that it increases business expansion opportunities that people will be willing to invest in here because we have the proper infrastructure to bring in those planes and can make the, the accommodations.
Right. And absent some severe economic downturn, there is little danger of us not recouping what we've invested here. Would that be fair to say?
It, it would. Just based on the numbers right now, if you look at the overall statistics, we are the busiest airport in the state of West Virginia as far as what they term by operations. And what I mean by that is that takeoffs and touchdowns. And so, the, the number of planes that primarily that, that general commercial aviation that occurs. Granted, there's, you know, we do have Southern Airways Express that, that provides the, the passenger service, but there's also a lot of activity between WVU Athletics. And, and you get into a, an additional description of run, the, the runway is, is added. There will be additional teams that can fly into Morgantown right now. They're, they're going to Bennington Airport or to Pittsburgh International and they're, they're transporting them. While with the new Aquatics Center before, or currently WVU Athletics and those type, that's all activities are away. Those will be held here. So, there will be increased traffic that, just on athletics alone, based on the, the Aquatics Center and increased number of teams, primarily basketball, volleyball, that sort, those type of, of the kind of smaller to medium-sized jets, they will enable them to, they can fly into, into Morgantown Airport. Again, relating to the, the runway extension, you know, irrespective of, of the hangars. But, but getting back to your, to your question, my indication is that our area of the state is very strong and will continue to be so. And so, I think we are risk adverse of, you know, of recouping those dollars of, of something bad happening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Let me just also speak to the, that this is a, a piece that fits into the plan that takes it not only to the runway extension, but to the development of the airport and beyond. This has been in play for a long period of time. What we've had now, what we have with this particular circumstance is, is a way of financing it and moving it forward in a, in, in making sure that this, this activity is on a path that will eventually give this plan the, the, the conclusion that we hope for. Counselor Wendell?
Two things. One is very parochial about all this new business. How are we going to get this into the city and not have it be out in Granville or someplace that's not the city? I'm just worried that the, the city is doing all of this and the business that's going to come in may not be in the city.
How many acres is the business park?
Ninety-six at least. Need a development with approximately three thou, three hundred beyond that.
So, there, there's really two issues at hand. So, let's, let's address your question having to do with businesses that are looking at locating and, and out, let's call it out county and, and not in Galway County or Preston County or any adjoining county for, for that matter. You know, any large sort of manufacturing operation that locates in the county, we all benefit from that because it's the executives, it's the workers that look at moving here because of the community. So, there, there is a, a benefit that the businesses that are here, the support industries that, that, you know, otherwise just circulate the economy, meaning the grocery stores, the restaurants and things like that, you're feeding into that system. So, if we have a larger regional tax base, we all benefit. So, you know, that's that, that saying of the, the tide rises all boats. But, but we are, we are, we are supporting, this gets into a broader philosophical question. The city is pulling the, the aviation weight of the region. And, and there's, the, the question has been suggested and submitted that there is some other interested parties that could come into the, the picture. And as we talk about the runway extension, we may need to have that, that conversation because we may not have the wherewithal when, when really the, the numbers pan out of, you know, what the FAA is, is willing to, to reimburse. But on the other hand, as, as a managed sort of property, we do have control over not only the, the resources that we expend, but what our revenue potential is. And what I mean by that is that we have a fixed base operation that is solely under our control. We have fuel sales that's solely under our control. We have a potential business park that a good portion of the land is, is currently owned by the city. So, when, now, the, the, the business park area, that is not ready to, for sale of properties because the, the dirt that needs to be moved from the runway, that's coming from where that business park is. So, all of that, it's a borough site where all of that, that's where there's sloped land is leveled out, all of that dirt is, is moved over. So, there is a potential of that with the increased tax base that'll come back directly to the city, that we can repurpose that property in whether it be a research and development, a high-tech. There's many different ways that we can have where there is ancillary businesses that could be aviation-related or transportation-related for the, if you need multiple modes of transportation for moving out goods. And so, having that multimodal sort of arrangement, it makes that, that property very attractive. So, you have to look at the broader perspective of our role in, in aviation and really what the, the revenue potential and what control that the city has in that regard as we develop the, the property. And it, and it really adds value overall. So, i- if, if we are to look at engaging in that conversation with the other municipal entities or the, the county, we need to, to think through carefully of, you know, that, that, that role and involvement and what, what control that we no longer want to have over the airport property. Because the, the, the control of the property goes with whoever the owner is. So, if we, in, in essence, turn that over to some other new created entity like an airport authority, then all of those assets and all of the resources are pooled into that entity. So, this is a, a very careful business model. I think we need to carefully examine. I understand what you're saying, that there is a general burden that we're pulling in, but we, we have a huge, huge infrastructure asset in our portfolio. So, look at this as an investment, not so much a cost.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to ask was about, is the construction with private companies going to be put out for bids? How does that work?
That is required under our ordinances that once we're over a certain threshold amount of 25,000. And, and initially, upon the, the beginning phases of the construction for the, the hangars, this was roughly eleven, ten months ago, there was a number of bids that were put out. There, there was some initial work that had to be done by a private contractor. And so, those same firms will probably be interested and will be bidding again. But, but to answer your question, yes.
Yeah, okay.
This is, you will, you will see a lot of activity under the city manager's report and future agenda items, asking to approve bids on vertical construction for the, the trades that are involved and, and the like. So...
Okay.
Okay. So, I, I, I think I, I understand how this is being positioned and that we're, we're essentially making a loan to ourselves of 2.2 million dollars to complete these last two hangars. It's that...
That is correct.
However, my friend Jill is not happy with that, and so I thought I would ask you another question.
Okay.
When we're thinking about the entire project that we're planning to do, including the hangars and the extension of the runway, and we, we have this potential of not having, of running out of money before we're able to fulfill our obligations vis-à-vis the extension of the runway, why don't we phase in the hangars as we're able to afford them, put in one more hangar and then extend the runway and see, and then build the third hangar if we have the money to do that? Why, why would we want to commit to the hangars all at once?
For one thing, we, we want to make that area the property usable now. And I'll, I'll use that, the example of our pedestrian bridge that we're building right now. If you remember, we had some increased costs because of the delay in that. The cost of construction is going up every year. So, you have to ask yourself that's, you know, of the, the, the value of, of time and money. Is that something do we, are we willing to incur higher costs if we delay that? The other part of this is that with the hopes that the IRT could have finished this, the materials are already bought. So, otherwise, you're, you're looking at all of these materials that we're, we're going to end up storing them off to the side, will come back at a later time to construct them. So, the, the other item is that 2018 is the year to finish the airport or the, the T-hangers? 2019 is to do the runway extension. We can only have so many trucks operating there because what, what'll end up happening is that we're, we're shutting down too much of the airport. So, from a revenue, I, I think from a staging perspective, we should really space out the, the work that's being done. Again, the, the commitment that was made early on, you know, this were probably perhaps ten years or even greater in looking at this runway extension. These are conversations long ago that were made with the FAA and said, "We will do this in consideration for you giving us the approval." So, if we say, "Well, we may or may not get to it," you know what? We don't have the final word from them on the, on the runway extension. So, I don't want to send mixed signals to them that say that, "Well, we're, we're pausing on that." I realize that financially, th- this is not an easy project to undertake and, and, but I'm confident that we can come up with a, a revenue model that does not become overly burdensome and that where we complete the, the project and when it's, when it's all said and done, we will have a state-of-the-art aviation facility and a new business park that will be a significant changer, change to the, the local economy where we can really attract industry coming in. And flat land in this, in this town is, is, is a valuable commodity. And so, that's what will come out of this. But I, I'm thinking that really the, the time is now. We're, we're too far into this to, to pull back out. So...
Yeah. First of all, let me just say I'm a proponent of the airport and I appreciate it and I like aviation on a personal level. So, I, I like the idea of boosting the airport. But I have a few quick questions and I don't want to use up a lot of time. So, could we just run through a few rapid-fire, short-answer questions?
Sure.
What, the 2.2 million, that comes from our capital escrow fund. Is that essentially BNO tax from the construction BNO or where does that money come from originally?
Primarily. That's, that's what's feeding that.
Okay. So, if we give 2.2 million to the airport, what projects won't be getting 2.2 million? Do we have anything big on the event horizon that's going to be delayed by allocating this money?
No.
Okay. Will the cost of the hangar rentals go up? I'm assuming they will.
Yes.
Have we done a market study on what the market can bear for that? Or are we planning...
We have.
We have.
We did a 60-mile radius and we looked at a number of airport facilities that have either single or twin-engine planes and have a pretty good idea of what the market rates are. And we would want to look at offering enough incentives for, you know, aviators to, to look at committing, but once they're in and, and commit to a longer term, then, you know, adjust that to, to market rates. So, but we, we've gone through the financial projections and so, this is, even if it's not fully rented, would have the capacity to, to pay this back.
Okay. Just a few more quick ones. Is this going to be by ordinance? This, this interdepartment loan?
No. No, it was done by resolution. So, this is a one and done.
We're allowed to just make the decision and authorize you to do this?
That is correct.
Okay. Does the airport have the other elements that it may need to really capitalize on this investment? I don't know, pardon my ignorance. Do we have air traffic control? Is it an IFR-capable field? Are we needing that before these hangars will be fully used?
The, the airport facility is, is, and operational is fully under the control of the FAA. So, in terms of that, the, that part of the funding is, we do not provide that, but it's already there. So, this is to accommodate business traffic. This is not a build it and they will come. Now, this is basically, we're replacing, we have existing 39 rental T-hangers and we're replacing it with 45 and, and bigger spaces for the, the twin-engine planes.
Okay. So, two more. Does the success of this hangar investment depend on the air protection legislation that we're requesting from Charleston?
It'd certainly be impacted by it if, you know, if there was some structure that was being built. I mean, it's very important that we get that legislation passed. I, I don't know if I'd tie the two together, you know?
Okay. Finally, is the IRT proposal an all-or-nothing venture? I mean, the decision was made in DC. Could we still perhaps get a little bit of help with the construction costs, if not the whole, the whole thing?
We say help from the IRT on the T-hangers or on the runway extension?
On the, on the hangars. Was that ever for the hangars or was it only for the runway protect, uh, extension?
The, the funds that, let me see if I can answer your question.
Let me, maybe I'm not being clear. I thought we were getting some manpower from...
Originally, when we, we started the, the T-hanger project, what was projected out is that the, the cost of the materials only was 2.5 million. And so, we didn't factor in labor, we didn't factor in heavy equipment, we didn't factor in fuel. So, what the, the IRT program brought from a limited amount of time from May through July is much, much smaller units. They didn't stay as long, we didn't have the supervisory folks, we didn't have individuals with vertical construction experience. And so, not nearly as much that should have been completed was, was undertaken. So, we, whenever this, years ago, when this was set up, when the, the folks that were managing the, the projects at the, at the time was thinking that there was no labor cost. And so, it didn't work out that way.
Okay. So, we're not getting any labor help from...
Not anything additional from this point forward.
From this point forward.
And for that matter, by having a private contractor, really time is of the essence. We need to complete it and we need to open it up. So, because the, the first hangar's being delayed, we won't... So, because the first hangar's being delayed, we won't rent that out until all three are completed because it doesn't make sense if we have construction equipment out there. It'd be real disruptive to have planes, you know, dodging heavy equipment and that sort, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I got a few questions as well. But where does the revenue go for the existing 39 hangars?
It's retained within the airport fund. They have a self-contained fund.
And so, when we eventually construct these new 45, tear down the old 39, we're going to be repaying the loan from the revenue with the 45. Is that going to create, is that going to divert that revenue from the airport general fund?
Not in such a way that's, for one thing, the revenues are pretty minimal because they're almost artificially, they're too low right now. My thought is by the increased number of planes that are coming in and out of the hangars, we could make up for that in fuel sales. One other kind of odd element, because of the very, very low rents, from my understanding, some planes that are stored in there aren't even flying planes. So, the hangars that we're building, this is with, likely, we would require that these are navigable sort of airplanes and that we're not just having a pole barn, basically, to store. I think the term they use is "hangar queens." And so, you want planes that are going to be in and out buying fuel. Yep. And so, that's where, I think that's where the offset is.
Okay. And what's the payoff period?
Minimum of 20 years.
20 years, okay. And then, the estimate, the cost estimates, you mentioned that you did some extrapolation. Can you talk a little bit more about that process? And was that, was that done with estimating consultants? How did we get to that number? What is the contingency? How confident are we about that? Are we going to be coming back and looking for another million? How do we, how are we sure we won't be doing that?
Okay, so this is based on our own estimates. So, the airport engineer is, there are many components that have already been completed by construction companies that are in this area. So, we're factoring in, and there is that regional adjustment that you would do that it's based on the construction that's been done on this property. So, despite what work has been done by the IRT, we've ended up using a construction contractor to do a lot of the vertical work. And there's been other trades that originally were supposed to be part of the IRTs, like an electrician, that sort, that were not, that we ended up under the general contract that was made with contractors. But, so, we've already spent, we're extrapolating what has been spent on airport or hangar 1 for 2 and 3. So, in that respect, I feel pretty confident this isn't just, you know, based on some of the cost estimates from places far away. No, these are local, actual invoices that came through. We do have, there is a contingency that's within this construction estimate because anything, you know, of course, that you construct out, that you have that about 10% to 15% sort of of the unknowns. And the other part that can drastically change a construction estimate is when you get into underground construction. Much of that work has already been done. So, the pad on hangar 2 is already completed. The construction on hangar 3, that done underground work has not been done. And I can tell you what we have run into that's been very expensive is that it's very, very hard rock that's there. And so, they added an additional cost of able to, whatever the equipment, to extract that out and to be able to put in the suitable footers that are needed. And so, that's been another, that's just driven up the cost in hangar 1, that just not knowing what the soil conditions are. And until you get, you know, in the middle of that construction, that bit is a little bit of a wild card, so.
So, are you factoring for the possibility of that into this 2.2 million?
We are, yes.
Because we've encountered that near, on that site?
They're right next to one another, right. So, it's likely that the soil conditions would be consistent all the way through this entire pad area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I appreciate the detail and the conversation about this project. And I guess two things I wanted to say is, one is, some people have been waiting for this for 20 years. You know, they've been talking about falling apart, hangars and the need for updated hangars, probably to the point where some, like, we're talking about some of the airplanes are no longer even usable. So, I think that, once we start a project like this, if we do keep that momentum going that the manager's talking about, I think that's really important, important to FAA, that we keep our commitments and keep things moving. And just, overall, that when we start something, that we don't stop or try to rely on labor that was great for getting started, but not necessarily for completing. So, I think this is a really good solution to a problem that just needs to keep that momentum going and not wait in any way to get it done because the prize is getting that runway extension. And so, if we can use this to leverage that and then use that to leverage the business park, then we've got our home run and we're moving forward, and we have a viable airport, and we're really in good shape. So, I think this is a great first step and very admirable. Do we have, I guess we don't have FAA approval to then get a timeline for working on the runway extension?
We don't at this point, but let me tell you what the critical timeline is. And I do want to describe that we are going back to the IRT for the runway extension. Why is it different and why are we relying on them again? So, the smidl that was put in to the Department of Defense, it was due late in September for the construction of, the construction period of 2019. It's all uploaded into a portal, and these different units, they bid on these different projects. It'll be early in spring. What is critical, that's needed for a go or no-go with the military is that we have all the approvals in place with the FAA. In April of this year, in essence, we need to have substantial completion. It doesn't mean that we have to cross every T and dot every I, but substantial completion of the paperwork that's in place. The very first step is what's called the justification study, and this has been ongoing for some time. And I submitted earlier this year, there was some comments that were made, and there was a big push to close some of the gaps that were in that study. I could probably spend about an hour talking about the details of what they get into. Once we get through the justification study, there's two other studies that are immediately following, which are completed right now. One is called a benefit-cost analysis. So, this is a separate evaluation that the FAA looks at to determine what percentage that they will pay for the runway extension. There's another study that's called an environmental assessment that looks at, you know, what the impact is on soil and, you know, many different elements that there's no hazardous sort of environmental effect that occur. But the very first step is what's called the justification study. Can you justify, is there the level of activity there to justify that you need a runway extension? And we have shown that from not only current users, but also for current planes that leave out of the airport, what's required for a full fuel load, as well as a full passenger load, what is required for the safe runway distance and for landing as well. And it gets into, it's a real detailed sort of exercise, and it's also an exercise in math, where it's what the requirements are to safely have planes operate if they're traveling a distance of 1,000 nautical miles, is how that's computed out. So, so, getting back to, why should we rely on the IRT program for the construction of 2019? Well, this is an entirely different group because all we're doing is moving dirt. We're picking up dirt on one side, and we're moving it to the other end. So, the skill level of the troops that are involved, we're not putting in vertical construction where you have to have someone that understands the construction engineering or construction management. We're looking for a certain skill level of moving dirt, is what it boils down to. And it would be otherwise very, very expensive if we were to do this through a private contractor because you're talking about an enormous amount of dirt that we have to push at the end of that runway, and it's building up, it's, you know, quite a height. If you ever get a chance, and I'd be happy to arrange a tour of the airport because you really should see all of this because it's a spectacular view at the end of that runway because it's a considerable drop-off. And so, we're having to build up that soil, not only for the runway itself, but there's also an additional extension for a safety zone. If there's a plane that has to board a flight and that they have an ability of where it's, you know, scraping on its belly and the plane stops safely that way and not going over. So, in this instance, it's very carefully orchestrated of lining up the application before these military groups. And so, there's the particular sections, whether it be, you know, National Guard or Air Force Reserves or however they are, that need that exercise in building a runway in such terrain as that we have here. So, it is a very different construction method, and we're pretty confident in this instance, assuming that they deploy the number of individuals that they promised to us and that the federal government doesn't go through, you know, the budget problems that they did, that we should be able to complete this within the, starting in the upcoming year, so.
Additional conversation. We're back to the fact that what we're, really, this resolution is for the idea of using funds to make a loan to the airport. Everybody understands that because we're really quite wide-ranging. All right, let's call for the question.
Rachel Fetti.
Yes.
Ryan Wallace.
Yes.
Jenny Saleen.
Yes.
Ron Delaney.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Brazidas.
Yes.
Barry Wendell.
Yes.
And Mayor Kueke.
Yes, and that passes 7-0. Move on to, that's it, yeah, city managers' report?
Okay. First up, I won't mention any more about the T-hanger projects since it's been covered under the previous agenda item. We have next the amendment to the capital escrow fund. The capital escrow, that can be done simply just through a motion. And so, much of that, the dollar amount that's included in there is contemplating the loan that occurs with the airport fund.
So, you're looking for a motion?
Yes, correct.
Do I have a motion? We're asking to move funds?
Mm-hmm.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Do you need further, give us further information?
The only further information, if you recall, in the general fund, we're allocating money over from the municipal service fee. So, those dollars are shown in here where they're coming in of a like amount. So, we're not spending the capital dollars out of the police and streets budget. It's coming into the capital escrow fund of the same amount.
Okay. Any additional conversation? No? Call for the question.
Rachel Fetti.
Yes.
Ryan Wallace.
Yes.
Jenny Saleen.
Yes.
Ron Delaney.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Brazidas.
Yes.
Barry Wendell.
Yes.
And Mayor Kueke.
Yes, and that passes 7-0.
Okay. Next on the agenda, and I do have one more item aside, an action item. But the next one that's on the agenda is the award, the bid for the structural firefighting gear, bunker gear. And I apologize, the dollar amount that's mentioned in there for the selected vendor Premier Safety and Service is in the amount of 41,215, not the 31,000, so. So, again, this is the needed bunker gear for the new firefighters that then hired through the SAFER grant.
All right, do I have a motion?
Approve.
Seconded.
Motion and second by Councilor Fetti. Any additional discussion? Conversation, none? Seeing none, call for the question.
Rachel Fetti.
Yes.
Ryan Wallace.
Yes.
Jenny Saleen.
Yes.
Ron Delaney.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Brazidas.
Yes.
Barry Wendell.
Yes.
And Mayor Kueke.
Yes, and that passes 7-0.
I have a question related to that, and I know that it's after we've already approved it. But I'm curious, is this an expenditure that will happen every two years, five years, 10 years? Do we know, that type of thing for this time?
There is a lifespan.
That's what I was thinking.
I can tell you that the fire department, so this is the bunker gear for the new firefighters.
Right.
They're looking at replacing the existing bunker gear for the current firefighters, and is working with a grant writer and see if there's a potential grant to replace that. So, or at least help defray the cost, so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So, last but not least, is we're really starting out a very ambitious year as we're looking at major infrastructure projects and transportation. I am very pleased to tell you that the Hazel Ruby McQuain Charitable Trust has awarded the City of Morgantown 4.1 million for the renovation of the existing park and the Walnut Street Landing. I've detailed out in a memorandum to you the particular elements of this project that includes the upgrades to the existing amphitheater, whether it's seating, lighting, the whole experience that's centered around that. Not only this is an entertainment venue, this will be a vibrant community gathering spot that includes a structure similar to the farmer's market pavilion, but in a smaller scale, where vendors can participate, a part of an event, a 5K race, there's any number of activities and that sort. At the same time, we're embracing the Monahgehila River. The river's really our greatest asset. It's the entrance into our community. And for so long, it's been neglected. In fact, if you look at all of our buildings, we turn our backs to the river. Well, now, all of that's changing. And so, we can lead the way through this investment in the Walnut Street Landing. There are other investments that are being planned, public sector improvements on the waterfront with the Business and Economics School, the Pinico property through Sunnyside up. So, the public sector leads the way for private investment. When we were talking about multiplier effect earlier, here's an example of making a significant investment in a beautiful area of the city that the hopes that other investment will occur. So, in order to move this gift forward, of course, there's an agreement that says that we will construct and promise what we presented in the proposal. And, you know, I would be remiss that there was a lot of work that was put into this. And I'd like to commend WVU, really started this conversation. They've made the commitment through this study that was done through this company called Brailsford. And it was WVU that really moved that forward. So, in this agreement, we promise that we will construct all the improvements made to the Hazel Ruby McQuain Riverfront Park, as well as the Walnut Street Landing, all the improvements that are made to that. But the trust wants to make sure that we maintain our commitment to the park. So, 20 years from now, that as facilities age and things occur and repairs are needed, that there's a dedicated source of dollars that are set aside. So, the trust is asking that through our budget process, that we put $150,000 in a dedicated fund that can only be used for the park. And this will be done year after year after year. Once the fund accumulates up to a million... Once the fund accumulates up to a million dollars, then we can hold off on allocating additional monies. But once monies are appropriated for repairs, um, and that falls below the million, then we have to resume the hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, uh, continue that, uh, having that, that account. So, um, in addition to that, uh, in conversations with the trustee, um, there was an idea that was expressed of having a, uh, a, a city staff person manage that property. And, um, uh, not only manage, uh, the, the park element, but, um, this is a conversation for another day, but as we get into, uh, entertainment venues, we already have the, the Metropolitan Theater, which is a, uh, a tremendous community asset. And there's many elements of that that you can tie to the amphitheater property as you bring in, uh, entertainment venues. There is a way that through the improvements that'll be made at the park and some property acquisitions that'll generate additional income that will help pay for the position to, uh, take on those responsibilities. And, um, there's been some other duties that have been thought of that gets into the arts and entertainment and, and that's a much broader discussion. That's not anything that we have to figure out this evening. But it was a commitment that we would allocate such a person and, and quite frankly, for the amount of activity that'll be going on, we need to make sure this will be maintained as a vibrant center. Um, at, at the same time, um, as was expressed earlier, there is a, a public safety concern of having adequate police presence. And what will be included as part of the grant is having a, a new police substation that'll be integrated in some shape or form. Not clear if it'd be part of the depot or if it's some other nearby, but, uh, demarked with a signage that's on there that, that, uh, shows that there is a dedicated police presence. And I've spoken to the police chief and is very enthusiastic about that. And he plans on incorporating the overall bicycle patrol out of this particular location. Um, so again, that'll be, uh, covered by the, the, the grant. The grant, um, asks, of course, as we, uh, frequently use the name Hazel Ruby McQuain in all aspects of the Hazel Ruby McQuain Riverfront Park, perhaps maybe the Hazel Ruby McQuain, uh, landing at the Walnut Street Landing. In any event, they want to have that name recognition and the, the, the name tied to, associated with that. Because that was really the, the desire of, uh, Hazel Ruby McQuain. And it's that, that gift back to the community. And so that's, that's only fitting that we pay tribute to her honor and legacy through this donation. So, uh, uh, of course, like any contractual arrangement, um, the, the trust and the foundation, they want to mitigate any of the risks and there's ways through our insurance policies that, that we can indemnify them and name them as an additional party, uh, particularly during the, this is during the construction phase. So things happen and, and, and alike, and that's kind of a normal contractual sort of procedure. So, uh, to receive this four point one million, there's not a match. There's no other grant program that's, that's like this where we receive a hundred percent funding. So although we're going to be setting aside monies over time, I guess think of that as if we did apply through some government grant program, we'd be looking at anywhere from twenty to fifty percent. Um, so in lieu of that, we're slowly accumulating future revenues to be set aside for the, the repair and maintenance. So it's monies that we're setting aside that we're going to be using on our own facility. Um, so this, um, this starts, uh, you know, in a very exciting conversation of what the possibilities are and to look at a premier community gathering space, um, and really add to the, the community vibrancy. Um, and it's something that we discussed during the, the strategic planning process. So this is all very consistent with really the vision that we've outlined. And it's exciting that we're, we're accomplishing this very quickly. Um, so, and, um, so, so this was the, kind of the, the overall concept. But the very first step is to authorize me to sign the agreement. Um, and we get going with the bidding process and you'll hear lots about that, uh, how we're progressing in future meetings and, and, uh, and things like that. So.
Can we move that, that you signed it?
There's a motion that's at the bottom of the page two, if someone would care to read it. Do I have a volunteer? Council Wendell.
Sure, um, it's about on page two, here you go. Motion to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Hazel Ruby McQuain Charitable Trust for the Hazel Ruby McQuain Riverfront Park Walnut Street Landing. In the proposal submitted to the charitable trust and comply with the agreed upon requirements as described in the memorandum dated January eighth, twenty eighteen, I would move for that.
Second.
Second.
Go ahead, Council Wallace.
Council Wallace, thank you. All right, uh, is there any additional discussion?
Well, first of all, congratulations.
Congratulations. Bravo.
And we talked at our retreat about the marvel on the Mon. This makes it literal.
That's right.
This is going to be a marvel on the Mon. It's encouraging that our amphitheater will be used as a great gathering venue. Potentially some great outdoor concerts will be a possibility. So, so much great, draws to our community are possible here. If, and Hazel Ruby McQuain clearly is our fairy godmother. So thank you to her and, and her descendants. Just the EOR question here. When I think about waterfront property, obviously these questions relate to, to more to oceanfront property, but the idea of flooding and, and concerns about that. Do we have flood insurance by any chance?
It does and it will flood, period. Uh, so that's part of the design considerations. Uh, in fact, that's, that's really, um, designed as a, um, hopefully I'm using the term correctly, but like a retention sort of area. So basically outside of the banks, so it relieves the, the pressure that, you know, it doesn't come into, to residential areas. So the, the type of construction materials, um, that anticipates that a portion of that will be underwater, that some portion. So, you know, these are brick building, or not brick, but concrete that's used. And there's design elements that, that contemplate that. Now, we are adding electricity and other things, but these are on elevated platforms. And so we can look at historic data, you know, of what the, the river levels have been at, you know, in the past. But, but yeah, I, I would say there will be periodically, you'll, you'll see part of the seating will be underwater. So.
Great. Yeah, I know Manhattan, for instance, is considering constructing a wall in lower Manhattan to prevent this very kind of situation. So yeah, I'm glad that we're on the cutting edge here of thinking about those issues. So thank you. So.
Additional conversation, Council Fettie.
I just want to say that it is such a privilege to feel like I'm just sitting, watching this amazing home run and I get to sit in the front row. And I am just so, just so proud of our city. And I'm so proud of Council, Councilor Celine, who has fought for the riverfront and just on and on and on. And our mayor, um, you know, and other former councils who've just really worked so hard. And, um, I, I'm just so, just so proud of you, city manager. And, um, just so happy and pleased and so grateful to our staff because I know that they must've been working very, very hard, um, to help make all of this come together. And so grateful, our community will benefit so much. I just, uh, um, I'm just, you know, I, I'm just tickled, tickled, so happy. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'll second that. And also I just, again, um, want to express appreciation to the, um, Hazel Ruby McQuain Trust for this opportunity to really, um, give the riverfront a new shot in the arm. Um, I, I agree that the river is one of our greatest assets and it is underutilized. And so this really will help, um, bring people and further development down there. And so thank you to the trust again and to the trustees for, for entrusting us with this, uh, with this gift and this opportunity.
Council Celine.
So already I'm thinking about how are we going to get this in operation and, um, very excited. It's almost like looking at it as a bridge between the water, the trail, the business community and the city. So that we're really, we have these, uh, linear parks, the river and the trail. But then this is the sort of the stability in the middle, the, the jewel, the, the part that, that connects it all together. And I've been thinking about the River Town program that kind of helped spur this renaissance of coming in and having a lot of community meetings and people talking about what they, what they, uh, would like to see in their own, you know, what we would like to see in our own community. And then, um, the Brownfields group has been working a lot with the manager and, and trying to help. We need sort of some glue to tie some of these, these things together. And then people like Mary Wimmer and, um, Ella Belling, who are talking about, you know, how you get kayak launches in there and how you, how you kind of just pull together the river and the trail and the town. So, um, also we should be thinking about WVU and, and that, the study that you're referring to. And also their interest in, in partnering on lots of projects in this area. And, um, and Bow Park, who has been doing a lot of the maintenance and the nitty gritty work of kind of holding together, uh, trying to keep that venue programmed. Um, one thing that I would like to see as soon as possible, and, and I don't know how we effectuate this because we have had trouble with this in the past, is as you're coming down the, the driveway, uh, we've always wanted a sign right there that honors the Ruby McQuain, um, name. Uh, and we've had trouble sometimes with getting permission in the right of way from the Division of Highways. But if we were to just locate that sign a little bit lower so that it was almost like confirmation that you'd arrived at the park, we might be able to get something in there sooner rather than later. Just to have, have a sign at the top that reaffirms that you are where you are. Because I've had people come down and they're like, well, this, you know, and you can see it once you get to the amphitheater.
Right, it's below street level.
I think that, I think that part of honoring someone is making sure that, that that happens. And if it can't happen right up at the roadway, if it can happen just a little bit further down. But that's a very practical thing that we can talk about later. But things like that really will help to develop that, um, confidence and that relationship with the trust that we follow through on some of those things. Even though I know that people were trying really hard, numerous people over a long period of time.
So, wait finding signs are included in, in part of the proposal. So I, I think that the, the look and the feel will be awesome.
But it was, people said that before. So I want to make sure that this time people recognize that that was part of a previous proposal and now we need to make sure that we, that we make that happen. Anyway, this is a wonderful day for Morgantown and appreciate all of your hard work because it's, it's easy to talk about getting grants. It's much harder to actually get them turned in, uh, and, and have them to the level of quality that you're proud to, proud to put them into, into effect. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other little comment since, I'll chime in too. There's been a whole lot of people who are responsible for this activity, you know, from Billy Coffin, Daffer on down.
Yeah.
Uh, they all deserve their kudos, but now it's my turn. It's my turn to move it forward. So, this is the beginning of the project. So we need to pass it forward. And I'm happy to do that. Uh, do I, I have a motion? Did it, did I? I got a second? Or, and we're, do you want to vote individually or do we do this by acclamation?
I think we need to vote individually.
Let's vote individually.
Make it.
Call for the question.
Rachel Fettie.
Yes.
Ryan Wallace.
Yes.
Jenny Celine.
Yes.
Ron Delaney.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Brazidas.
Yes.
Mary Wendell.
Yes.
Mayor Kueke.
Yes, and that's seven zero.
And that concludes my report.
Very good.
Pretty good report this time.
I could drop the mic.
You could.
Report from the city clerk.
I just wanted to announce that the city clerk's office is accepting applications for police. And if anybody's interested, please contact the city clerk's office at two eight four seven four three nine. Or you can just stop by our office at any time.
Very good. Report from the city attorney.
Your report, please.
A report from council members.
Um, so I, um, went, I was shopping this weekend and I was just saying hello and happy new year to someone that I happened to bump into. And, um, this gentleman ultimately relayed that he was a firefighter and complimented the city council for the work that we've been doing. And I, I completely freaked out. And my fourteen-year-old daughter was with me and she said, Mom, you're completely red and you're blushing. And I tried to figure out some way to explain to her what it's like to be complimented by a firefighter. Which is to me, like, I, the way I explained it to her was, well, um, it's like being an accountant, uh, you know, in Gotham. And then Batman shows up and says, you're doing a good job and, uh, you know, I appreciate your math skills. And that is, you know, sometimes just how it feels to be a part of this city. And, and today is one of those days for so many reasons. I'm just, um, you know, what we do is very important, but it is not as important as what happens every single day, um, in the work that's done by our employees. Whether they're firefighters or police officers or our administrative staff. Um, and I'm just so, just really verklempt. So thank you all for that. Um, in more minor news, um, we have a First Ward Neighborhood Association meeting on the twenty-second. Um, I truly do hope that folks will turn out and be a part of the Martin Luther King Celebration on the fifteenth. Um, for those of you who have not attended, it really is a wonderful celebration of the inclusiveness and, and what is really the diversity of our, of our city. And, and I hope that we will come together again and, and just have a great time. And aside from that, I have nothing. And this concludes my report. So thank you, Mayor.
Council Wallace?
Thank you. Just a few quick items. Uh, last Saturday, I was happy to participate, volunteer briefly um, with the Mon County Recycling Program at the Walmart, picking up, uh, recycling from county members who do not enjoy the Morgantown Municipal Services of, uh, single stream curbside recycling. Uh, while I do sympathize with their plight in having to haul bags and boxes to the recycling center, I do appreciate Mon County Recycling for making that option available. It is, uh, an environmentally friendlier alternative to filling landfills. So, um, I was happy to partner with them last week and we'll do it again for the e-recycling next week. Uh, just commend that group for offering what they do. Uh, Dan Shook from Safe Communities sent me a communication regarding a proposal that he'd like to make for acquiring some property for the construction of a safety town, uh, educational demonstrative center. I don't know quite how to describe it, but it is a wonderful idea, one that is needing to be fleshed out more. But, um, I will say that I'm interested in doing what we can to, uh, to look at this proposal and see if we could provide, um, some city property. It needs to be cited properly. It needs to be, uh, thought out well. And the construction also needs to be funded and maintained so that it doesn't fall apart after its construction. But there's also a bit of a catch twenty-two here in that he has, uh, potential donors who are interested in contributing to the construction of this safety town exhibit. But before they really sign on, they want to know that there's property and that it's a going concern. And from our perspective, I think we too are hesitant in wanting to assign property without knowing that the investors are ready to go. So there's that catch twenty-two. I think this bears further examination, perhaps from the Health and Wellness Commission. So we can look into that. But I just wanted to report on this. And if we could get a safety town exhibit in Morgantown, it would benefit everyone, but especially the kids. So brief report on that. Wiles Hill, my neighborhood, Third Ward, uh, has successfully raised twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars for the replacement of the playground structure that had to be removed. It was no longer compliant. It was no longer safe. The equipment itself is a little over sixteen thousand, so we're about thirty-five hundred dollars short. There's some other expenses on top of that, but we are working hard through community events like the Fall Harvest Party, Snowflake Two K, Pottery Sale in conjunction with Bow Park. It's an active and thriving effort and, uh, successful. So commend the Wiles Hill community, uh, for, and the city at large for getting behind that effort. Um, seeing the police officers come in here for their awards today was, um, significant to me. I appreciate and wanted to commend publicly our, our safety officers, all of them, EMS, police, fire. Uh, they do a great job of. publicly our safety officers, all of them, EMS, police, fire. They do a great job of keeping us safe, and it's nice to see that we recognize them and award their service. On a related note, I'm concerned that the city of Morgantown may need to do more to address animal cruelty and related laws, perhaps through ordinance. I have received communication from a Terry Chaprinco, I believe is the name, regarding an incident in a neighboring county where a small animal froze to death in a recent cold spell, and it was in some small part due to the fact that the police officer was not allowed to seize the animal, but instead could only refer the situation to a county humane officer who did not respond, who could not respond in a timely manner to prevent the dog's death. It's a small matter in the universe scale, but it's an important matter to me, and I think that the citizens of this town and county do want to take good care of their animals. And so I will be looking into this, and perhaps looking at some model ordinances that we can implement at the municipal level, looking, of course, to the county, the dog warden, and the services that they provide, and perhaps adopting that. But perhaps most importantly, empowering our police officers to take action immediately without having to defer the situation to a humane officer. Thank you, that's all.
Councilor Cline.
I just think it's interesting to sit here for a minute and reflect upon all of the things that are going on, just even right now, this meeting. And I tend to, as soon as I get news that one thing is completed, just work on going to the next thing and kind of miss that point when you kind of reflect on the success and the fact that we're moving forward quickly on items like the airport and the waterfront. And these items might seem like they have come quickly, but there's been a lot of groundwork on each of them that have been years and years and years in the making. But it takes qualified staff and leadership to make them finally come to fruition, because if you don't, as I was saying earlier, if you don't complete the application, you can't get the funds. And you have to have a good design, and you have to have people behind it. So, it's really, it's really something to think on and reflect on and celebrate. So, I'm really pleased with how enjoyable it is to come every meeting and see all of you. It's been a long time since we've had a really, truly collegial council that may differ on issues, and we have differed on issues, but all really have the public in their mind and in their heart, and know that there's got to be give and take, or we don't get anything completed. So, I just really appreciate being able to serve with all of you. We have been kind of recognized in an interesting way. There's a webinar that's going to happen Wednesday, January 17th, and I, as a representative, was asked to talk about how trails transform America, leveraging the power of connected trail infrastructure. So, I would say that this Ruby grant is part of this leveraging the power of connected trail infrastructure, and that's a water trail, the Mon River, and also our rail trail. And so, because we're part of a future trail system, and this will affect our waterfront park, a future system that will connect all the way up to the Great Allegheny Passage that goes to Pittsburgh and DC, and then will go down toward Clarksville and over to Parkersburg, and then up into Ohio, we will eventually be part of a network. So, we're 50 miles now, but we will be part of a network of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of mile, probably one of the largest, if not the largest, I've heard it's the largest, trail system. And so, the fact that we're kind of dead center in the middle of all of this, and the fact that they're talking about how, in Washington, that there's talk of an infrastructure bill, and that that's heating up, and that they're working hard, the national trails organizations are working hard to maximize opportunities to strengthen communities and include funding in this infrastructure bill for trails walking and biking. And they're, so they're looking at collecting together business leaders and elected officials, and talking about the value of these linear parks, or transportation systems, or however you want to, however you want to look at it. But this is a big deal for us, if we did have more funding available at the national level, to just work on trail maintenance, property acquisition, how we make our trail envy of other trails, how we attract people to come here to live because of our fabulous trail system, and how we have people come here to visit. So, even with 50 miles of trail, I've been on our trail and had somebody from Ohio coming to Morgantown to stay for a few days, and someone else coming from North Carolina to join them, as kind of a, you know, we're kind of mid-America right here. So, it's really timely and important to continue working on strengthening all of our infrastructure as we have in our, as we have in our strategic plans. So, just wanted to make you all aware of that, and I have to find, if anybody is good at knowing how to connect to webinars, or knows a good studio, I think I'm going to go talk to the university, but I don't know who else might have a, I need to find somebody that can help connect us up to this webinar, so. And I'm getting information from Ella Belling and others that, about the economic multiplier that our trail has, is connected to. So, thank you.
Councilor Delaney.
I don't have much. Maybe just reiterate a couple things. First of all, I want to thank our neighbors for, and constituents for the patience that was exercised this week regarding the trash pickup. The other thing I wanted to do is actually come back to a comment that was made earlier by Deputy Mayor Brazidas, and that is just encouraging folks to clear those sidewalks, or it's a great resource that the deputy mayor pointed out. I didn't realize that program of volunteers existed for folks who weren't able to clear their own sidewalks. So, I hope folks will take advantage of that. I did want to mention that I did hear from someone who frequently crosses Spruce out here, between the library and the city hall and the parking lot over there, and had expressed some concerns about the speed of traffic, and this person may not be the quickest getting across the street. And so, we understand that that is a state-maintained road, but I just thought that I would raise that, bring that concern, and raise that concern, and see if there's anything that we can't do to see if it is an ongoing issue, and if there's some way that it might, we might be able to address that. I think outside of that, that wraps it up for me. Thanks.
Very good. Deputy Mayor.
Great. I just, I'd like to thank the candidates for positions on the tree board today. There seemed to be strong interest among board members in hiring either a professional arborist or a urban forester. And when I asked John Weems, who's a current board member whom we reappointed, he said this would be an efficient, effective use of tax dollars. We would see very quickly a noticeable improvement in the quality of the city's forests. We would see improvements not just downtown, but in all areas of the city. And I think that study that Jonathan Cumming, whom we also reappointed, is worth quoting just briefly, which talks about the economic benefits of trees. So, an analysis of the community forest in Morgantown, West Virginia, was undertaken in 2004 to characterize the structural and functional attributes of this forest resource. The assessment revealed that this city has about 658,000 trees, that's about 20 trees for every one of us, with canopies that cover 35.5% of the area. The urban forest currently stores about 93,000 tons of carbon valued at $1.9 million. In addition, these trees remove about $2,900, 2,900 tons of carbon per year, which is a $60,000 per year savings. With trees and jobs removing about 104 tons of air pollution per year, that's $711,000. Trees in Morgantown are estimated to reduce annual residential energy costs by $380,000 per year. So, trees save us money. I think that might be important to emphasize moving forward as a possible discussion of a professional arborist or urban forester comes to our attention. I also want to thank those who applied, as Councilor Wallace mentioned, to the Health and Wellness Commission, extremely qualified candidates. Wonderful to see the outpouring of interest in that commission. They already have, the yet-seeded commission already has apparently three tasks ahead of them. One is discussion of those bar closing times, the second is possibility of offering paid sick leave in the city, and then I guess the Safe Town now is on their agenda too, so we're loading them up ahead of time. The Learn to Skate Program, a combination of the Mason Dixon Figure Skating Program and Bow Park, is sold out. That begins on Sunday. It's exciting to see young and old people interested in the great art of figure skating. Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Wendell.
So, I was going to say something about the police and the people who applied for the Health and Wellness Commission, and the people on the tree board that we interviewed today, how qualified everybody was, and what good work the police did, but everyone else has talked about that. So, I have two other things that are different. State Senator Bob Beach posted a question on Facebook today about a possible bill in the state legislature to demand that guns be allowed on college campuses in the state. He asked how people felt about this possibility. I posted that I was adamantly opposed. There were some pro and some anti-gun people on the thread. The pro people engaged me in conversation, and I'm bringing this up because someone knew or found out that I was on city council, and asked if people knew of my attitude about guns before the election. I posted, I pointed out that I made it very clear during the campaign where I stood on this issue about guns. If this should be proposed, and if WVU opposes it, which apparently they will, I would hope that we could have a resolution standing with WVU against the spread of weapons on campus. At a national level, the current administration has repealed deferred immigration status for people from Haiti, El Salvador, Nicaragua, many of whom have been here as long as 20 years. It's possible that this is legal, but it is in no way moral. I worked with Haitians when I lived in Miami during the 1980 boat lift from Haiti, and with children of Salvadoran refugees when I taught school in Los Angeles. My father's grandparents and parents came to the US around 1906 from Tsar's Russia. Had they been asked 20 years later to return, to return, which would have been to an independent Poland, and not Tsar's Russia, which didn't exist, my four-year-old father and his eight-year-old sister, who never lived in Europe, would have had to stay with other people in the US or be returned to a foreign country that even my grandparents barely remembered. The cruelty of these moves is unimaginable. Anyone who agrees with this, who claims to be religious or pro-family is a liar. This is about something else. Excuse me. Acid reflux from a delayed dinner. Perhaps we as a council could show support for immigrants from these countries by a resolution, and I'm going to bring that up to the manager. That's all.
Very good. Thank you very much. Just a few announcements, and we'll look for adjournment. Morgantown Farmer's Market is starting up again, or I guess after the holidays. It's Saturday, Saturday, January 19th, from 11 to 1. It's free. It's at the Wesley United Methodist Church Gymnasium. We have another activity at the Botanic Garden, the Monarch Butterfly Conservation, or yes, Conservation of a Migratory Insect. And that's this Saturday also, at January 13th, from 1 to 3. Botanic Garden has a lot of programs. The Nature in Winter, that's Sunday, and again, that's from 2 to 4. And then, as was mentioned earlier on, the Community Coalition for Social Justice in Main Street, Morgantown. It's their 12th Annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration. Their theme this time around is Growing Up Martin. That's Monday, January, or Monday, January 15th, and that's from 2 to 4, and that's free at the Metropolitan Theater. I do hope that you enjoy the evening. I appreciate the quality of the people that are coming forth and volunteering for our commissions. It's amazing, and it's very, it's very heartwarming to see the kind of activity that this community is managing to muster, and the forward progress that we're making. We're very grateful. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Barry.
By acclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have four good hours of the day.